Progress.
Okay, well, I guess we've got to get to work, guys. What do they do, this is? Am I on now? Okay. It is. Is it red, is it red bright or not?
It's on area.
Yeah, area.
Maybe. Is that better?
No.
So it's on, so it must be...
The man who's working for that... Those cameras.
Testing. I think it worked.
Testing. Oh, they're... That guy.
It slipped me out. Check your mic.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're just like, oh.
Yeah, see, that's...
You want to try this one?
Try your...
Take it, let's take yours a little more.
It's not red up here. It says your eye.
It does, but I can't hear it. Thanks, Nick.
No, this is not where you hear me. Here, take my... Does yours work?
Yeah.
So...
Well, you should be... Mr. President, we should not talk.
I heard that Don wanted to mute me sometimes. I didn't know he would go to this extreme.
I didn't realize I had to mute all of them.
Okay, well, welcome, and we'll call our work session to the order. Thank you, everyone. We want to start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as a principle.
Thank you. Can we have a little call?
Yes, I'm all set, thank you.
Great. Okay, well, the work session of our... So our representative tonight is Danielle. And I'm sure you have lots of data for us. So without further ado, the floor is all yours.
Thank you so much. Yes, we do have a lot of data to cover tonight. This is all data from the 22-23 school year. As we wrap that year up and get geared up and ready for the 23-24 school year. So in terms of this specific data, certainly data that I'll pull at different times throughout the year, but we do typically report on it at the end of the school year. So just to kick us off and get us started, this graphic is just a reminder of our 23 through 28 new strategic plan priorities. So you'll notice that there's 10 different priorities identified in our archive, our honeycomb. And we're focusing on three of those priorities to start this school year. So exemplifying cultural responsiveness, diversity, and equity, providing project-based learning experiences, and increasing school safety and security. You may remember from our board and district goals that each of those priorities are identified as goals for that purpose as well. So we can see that consistency, we can see that alignment. And if you recall in our last workshop, we were focusing on those goals and some of the measures that align to them. So this evening, maybe you'll be focusing very heavily on some of those measures and where we finished up the 22-23 school year. I'll continue to visit this goal legend as we go through tonight's report. But I just wanted to point it out from the start that we know in some of our measures, sometimes our goals are to see an increase. See that upward trend or that improvement, particularly when it comes to involvement in school-based activities, for example, or when we're talking about the percentage of students who are proficient on universal community assessments, regions examinations, so have you. So what we see in our goals, we'll see it throughout the slides, is because we want to see that increase, we see an arrow pointing up on each slide as we go through those measures. If that arrow is green, it means that compared to the 21-22 school year, when I conducted that equity review, that we've made improvement. So the green arrow is a good sign. The black arrow means that we've maintained in that area. And the red arrow, yeah, even though it's pointing up, we want to see that increase, we did not see an increase in that area from school year to school year. And then on the flip side of that, we know that some of our measures, we want to see a decrease in the percentages. So when we're talking about the percentages of students who are absent, percentages of students suspended from school, percentages of students demonstrating at-risk behaviors, I used the downward-facing arrow to help us monitor that goal. But similarly to what we see up here, any time that arrow is green, that's a good sign because compared to the 21-22 school year, we've seen an improvement. If it remains black, it just means that the data was consistent from year to year. And if we see it in red, it means that that's an area that we did not improve with them from year to year. So I'll continue to explain that and point out those arrows as we go. But I just wanted to address that as we get started. So you may recall from our board and district goals that Goal 1A is to create an environment where all students, staff, and families feel a sense of belonging. That goal aligns with our strategic plan's shared goal. And those measures that you see, we had a brief conversation about last work session, but I'm excited to share with you that data in action. So tonight, we'll take a quick peek at chronic absenteeism data and as the school year progresses, if there's other areas that align in terms of measures, we can certainly take a glimpse. So when it comes to addressing that goal or some action steps that we've taken, our teachers and teaching assistants and staff have been so busy in this school year undertaking professional learning opportunities. I know myself, I was here with Tony as recently as this morning, delivering some professional development to staff. Another activity recent is our extended school year program, which I know carry overseas, but having the help of Jenna Wolken and one of our administrative interns, Troy Sivers, they were able to support that program. And again, when we're talking about creating that environment where there's that sense of belonging, that example, I think, is one of the best that we can give. Steps that we're currently taking, addressing our culture and climate, one of the measures that is also identified in the strategic plan is to formalize hiring and staff evaluation processes and procedures. And we're also exploring various grant opportunities. I know that certainly kept our AI busy over the last month or so. Steps that we're planning to take, you might have seen that we did launch a thought exchange today. It's actually in alignment with our next goal, but just as an example, each of our goals has a thought exchange component to it. So for this goal, by the end of November, we plan to gather some student feedback regarding this goal. We also plan to continue expanding our network of community partners and establish a timeline for future professional development opportunities. So you'll see this format continue as we progress through tonight's presentation.
If we have questions you want us to ask at this time, you want us to hold the end, or how do you want to...
I'm certainly happy to answer questions at any time. But I will take a chance at the end of each goal to answer any questions that go with that goal, as well as at the end. But I know sometimes they're burning questions, so I'm happy to answer them as we go.
In terms of expanding our network of community partners, what, give me some parameters on that. Who would we consider a community partner and for what?
I think it really depends on the goal. When we think about students, staff, and families feeling that sense of belonging, maybe it's a mental health-related partnership. So maybe it's expanding our partnership with our promised home student engagement specialists. Maybe it's expanding partnerships when it comes to our extracurricular activities. Beaver Lake, for example, when we're talking about STEM and science-related activities, how can we partner to create those authentic experiences and ultimately help students feel as though they have found their niche? Absolutely. So getting started with some of that data. When we're talking about chronic absenteeism, first I want to start off and just show these district demographics. When we're talking about proportionality, it's important that we think about the overall percentage of students who belong to specific demographic groups. So district-wide, 15% of students receiving special education support, 33% of students receiving free or reduced lunch, and 14% of students who are not white. These data points align with data throughout the entire school year. So usually during a school year, if it's just a snapshot in time, we see slightly lower numbers, usually around 13% special ed, 30% free or reduced lunch, 12% of our population of students who are not white. But this is cumulative over the course of the year, and students come in hours. So these numbers represent the end of the school year.
Just, I'm sorry, just a quick question. I love numbers. The free or reduced lunch eligibility has changed a lot over the last three years. I'm wondering how the 33% looks from a longer, similar course of time?
It has increased over time.
And then it has been over the last 10 years and every...
It has certainly increased over time. As far as hitting the threshold that I think you see many other districts hitting in terms of community eligibility, we're not there yet. But it is, again, an area that we have increased over the last 10 years or so.
I was just going to say, so when I went off the board, 19 into 28%. So you're saying of that group, 18%, that's just that group?
So, you notice I hit that next button on my side.
What was your question?
So Vic's question is pertaining to 18% of students. 18% of students, district-wide, were chronically absent in the 22-23 school year. So that's talking overall across the district. Just like the 15, 33, and 14%, 18% of our students were chronically absent in 22-23.
And define chronically?
Chronically absent is defined as missing 10% or more of days. So out of 100 days, 18 days or more. So I wanted to give that big picture data. So as we start to look at chronic absenteeism related to these specific student populations, we had some context, and we were able to have conversation about that proportionality to the population of students that we serve. So as an example, in the 21-22 school year, when we look at 18% of students who are chronically absent, 22% of them received special ed support. At the end of this past school year, 21% of those who were chronically absent received special ed support. So when I was describing that goal legend, obviously, we always want to see that decrease of the percentage of students who are chronically absent. But we also notice when we're talking about proportionality, if 21% of our students receiving special ed support fall into that group and our population of special ed students is only 15%, we know that we're out of proportion there. So we want to see that 21% become more proportionate to the 15%. But it's a green arrow because we did make some improvement. We saw that number decrease from last year to this past school year.
And then do we... So it's a fairly, statistically, it's a fairly small drop, but it's important. So improvement can have a lot of ways. Does this make me, I don't know how many students, is represented by the 1% drop? But to me, improvement plays a key in a lot of things. Is this from students who are, you know, were working within developing better habits? Are some of the, is this chronically absent or returning? Or are these a couple of families who just moved out of the district? What makes up this 1% in total?
It really depends. It depends on the students. It depends on the family. But again, that 1% is in alignment with our goal when we're thinking about that idea of continuous improvement. So sometimes these shifts or sometimes these strategies that are being implemented at the building level take time. They take time to make change. And so while it feels like it's only 1%, that 1% is a powerful impact in some of the activities that we've implemented. In this case, it shows that they're working because we're moving in the right direction. So then as we continue to take a look at some of our student populations, remember, 33% of our students receive free or reduced lunch. So ultimately, we would like to see this number closer to that 33%. In the 21-22 school year, 56% of the students who are chronically absent received free or reduced lunch. And 57% of those students who are chronically absent received free or reduced lunch in the 22-23 school year. So again, we would like to see that number continuously decrease. We unfortunately saw an increase by that 1%, but we acknowledge that we are not going to improve in every single area every single year. So that indicates that that might be an area that we would like to see some improvement over time. And then lastly, again, in terms of proportionality, these percentages that we see on that left-hand side are ultimately where we'd like to see our goal. In the 21-22 school year, we saw 21% of students who are chronically absent who are not white. We saw that decrease by that 1%. And you'll notice that like 1%, 2% trend is something that we'll see throughout tonight's data. But ultimately, we're working in the trend of trying to decrease the percent of students who are chronically absent, and we saw some improvement in that area. So that's where really breaking the data down into these specific groups is helpful and trying to look at it in terms of proportionality.
So you could be including of your free or reduced students that are not white.
Exactly.
So are you double, are you...
They are double counted in there. Yep. And the term that is used to describe that would be that intersectionality. A student could actually fall within all three of those demographic groups. But any activities that we can do to support all kids is what we're going for. And so if we are seeing a student who falls within all three, we'll see that improvement in all three of those areas. Great point.
And I think Vic and I are sort of doing things almost the same way at the moment. I'm wondering, whatever, whatever the percentages are for each group, are we seeing changes in the individual students or the families that comprise these numbers, or are these changing names? In other words, let's pick that, the top line, the 21% of students who are spent or are not absent. Is it, does it tend to be the same 21% from year to year? Or roughly 21% year to year? Or is it a different, does that group sort of rotate? Does it, does it roll?
Sure, no, I think that's a great question. And, you know, a lot of things come into play when we're looking at all 5,500-ish of our students. And I think with some, it is consistent year to year, unfortunately. And with others, fortunately, we see those names change from year to year. So it really depends on the indicator, it depends on the population of students. It depends on other factors too. So we know that, just as an example, sometimes we have students transitioning from fifth grade to sixth grade. We might see an improvement in attendance or not. Seventh grade to eighth grade, we're seeing that building transition. So we know that there's a lot behind this data, but it's really that 30,000-foot view and gives us that ability to monitor these trends over time. So again, this measure is really meant to find that proportionality of student populations and making sure that we're fairly consistent when it comes to that. So I know we answered some questions throughout the slides for that goal, but I'm happy to answer any other questions for gaining the goal 1A.
So pertaining to 1A, so what is the goal then? Because by hearing you talk about maintaining the... It's not on. So I guess I'm wondering, what's the ultimate goal?
Because if it's to align the proportionality or to ensure that the proportionality meets those numbers in the other slide, I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's a disconnect. Because you're creating an environment where all students, staff, and families feel a sense of belonging. I know that's an overarching district, I mean, strategic plan goal. I'm just wondering how that aligns with what you just shared. I'm just trying to bridge that because for me, it's a little confusing.
So I think when you look at the perspective of creating an environment that is going to allow students to have a sense of belonging, it really is if we're, if students are in school and we know that we're creating an environment where they feel supported. We know that some of these students don't feel supported, and so they're not attending school on a regular basis. That's why they're, you know, chronically absent. So it's making that connection with students. So with all of the strategies that social workers, teachers, psychologists, principals, liberty resource partners, all of those individuals are doing that on a regular basis with our students are helping to create that sense of belonging, and which is in turn creating that excitement, the engagement, the need and the want to be here on a regular basis.
I think too, just to echo what Dr. DeBarbury's saying, a lot of times with students that are at risk, which essentially, you know, a student getting free or reduced lunch is still with a disability, those would be considered risk factors. And all the trauma and form practices and research around that show that they do feel like maybe there's no sense of belonging. And the number one protective factor is a connection or a relationship with just one adult here at school. So that's, I think, where that comes from.
I agree. Yeah, that doesn't show that. So you give us some of that context, right? With some of the statistics about...
Gens or like...
Yeah, sorry. So I don't disagree with that statement. I'm just wondering. You've given us some context that they're not coming to class, they're chronically absent. I want to see the piece with the data that bridges what you're saying right now. If they're not getting a sense of belonging because of food insecurity, because of these other factors, I wonder, do we need to also put that within the narrative or the story that's being told with that data that's up there? So I'm just putting it in the space because it's just a portion of a greater story. And there's a lot of work that is being done by the team to address that. And I wonder if that piece of that story needs to be told because some do not understand food insecurity. They don't understand those type of data points that to students. So I'm just putting that in the space.
So one of the things that ultimately, hopefully, you'll see when we are having the secondary and the elementary building-level action plan presentations, remember, they're tying to our district goals for this year. So some of those strategies in more specific building-level data will be shared. This was really intended to be similar to prior years. That highest level, if there's follow-up, we can certainly follow up with more information based on the conversation today and adapt our future presentations to the needs of the board.
So just a quick, I'm just full disclosure. I did want Victor's microphone, and it remains so, and that's good. I didn't want Tanya's microphone, so we fixed it. Is there... Goodness. So that I can maybe stop asking just Louise. Is the data behind everything you presented to us available somewhere? So I don't have to keep just drawing information out of you and pulling things up?
It's like you love data like I do, Don. I'm happy to share. And there is a link to the live data set, I guess you could call it. It's an interactive report. So when it comes to the number of students, for example, you can hover over it and look at that specific number. You can also look at the report more visually than what's presented on the slide. So yes, I will go over that at the end. And the other thing that I just wanted to point out, I realize I didn't include all of the long-term objectives that are part of our boards and district goals. But I think to your point, Tanya, that's a really important component of this work because, just as an example for this goal, offering a variety of professional development opportunities to execute culturally responsive instruction, provide a robust curriculum that represents and reflects culturally, linguistically diverse identities and beyond, fostering relationships that build a sense of belonging for students from all backgrounds by implementing programs that eliminate the barriers to access and validating the student experience with decision-making that reflects diversity, equity, and inclusion as core institutional values. So I realize I didn't include those long-term objectives on our slides, but just, I think, to Dr. DeBarbury's point too, as we continue to have building-level presentations, they're going to dive in even deeper into some of those objectives that they're working on in their school buildings to align with those long-term objectives as well.
Don, did you want to tell everybody how to make sure their microphones are working other than Victor, Victor buggers?
I won't share that except Victor's in the room. So just keep that to us.
So I will continue on. Goal 1B is to prepare students to be knowledgeable, critical thinkers, communicators, collaborators, creators, and contributors. So we identified various measures when we were working together in our last work session. And we have those long-term objectives that align with that goal identified in that document as well. Just to point out, increasing student achievement is one of those objectives as we continue to look at some of the data that aligns with that goal. So when we consider some of the steps that have been taken as recently as this summer, teaching teams have been analyzing assessment reports in order to make plans for their instruction when it comes to the specific standards that they're working on with their teams. Updating our interactive district report card that summer professional learning and the importance, again, of that extended school year summer program. Continuing to take steps to address our culture and climate. Continue the curriculum work that has been ongoing. Streaming our platform for universal screening assessments. When I mentioned I was here earlier this morning, that was the session that Tony and I were hosting. This year, if we recall from the past, actually, in grades K and 1, we were using an assessment platform called EAMS Web Plus. And in grades 2 through 9, we were using an assessment platform known, most commonly as STAR, but Renaissance is the parent company. And so this year, we've made the move to align, actually, pre-K through grade 9, using all the same platform. So when it comes to some of those data points, I think, and then we'll see some better alignment. And teachers will have access to some different assessment tools that they didn't have access to in the past. And we will continue to explore those grant opportunities, as I mentioned before. The thought exchange that was launched today was really meant to help us define stakeholder understanding of important terminology, such as what project-based learning is. So we'll run that through the end of the week. We will continue to look at ways that we can expand that network of community partners and how we can begin to develop a timeline for monitoring of the development and implementation of those problem-based learning units. So when it comes to the big picture data, again, 30,000-foot view, a brief snapshot in time. When we're looking at our students' universal screening assessments in reading, I will just remind you of those district demographics. When we're looking at that proportionality. But we, at the end of the twenty-three school year, based on our spring assessments, again, that one snapshot in time, fifty-seven percent of students were performing at or above grade level in grades K through nine. Those universals, printers are administered to. So when we're analyzing the percent of students within each of those different groups who are part of that fifty-seven percent performing at or above grade level, you notice that in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, five percent of the students were performing at or above grade level, received special education supports. In the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, three percent of students were performing at or above grade level, received those supports. So again, thinking about that goal, we want to see the percentages increase. Unfortunately, we did not see that progress, which is why that arrow is appearing red. When we're thinking of our students who receive free reduced lunch, again, when we look at that fifty-seven percent of students at or above grade level, twenty percent receive free reduced lunch. That was at the end of the twenty-two school year, or the end of the twenty-three school year. We saw some growth in that area, where twenty-two percent of students who are at or above grade level received free reduced lunch. So that goal indicator shows that we saw the improvement, yet we want to see that continued improvement. So that the twenty-two percent increases to become more proportionate to the thirty-three percent of our population. And then lastly, we also saw some improvement in our population of students who are not white when it comes to how many students were performing at or above grade level within that fifty-seven percent. So again, a one percent improvement, but we saw that improvement and we would like to continue to see improvement in that area. But you'll notice that it's not as big of a gap compared to the students receiving special education support, for example. Again, acknowledging that intersectionality exists, the student could fall in multiple groups. Overall, when we look at our universal screening assessments in math, our students perform better. So sixty-four percent of our students are performing at or above grade level in math compared to that fifty-seven percent in reading. We saw a similar number of students performing at or above grade level who received special education supports from school year to school year. We improved the percentage of students performing at or above grade level receiving free reduced lunch. And we remain consistent with the percentage of students who are not white as well. And then lastly, while we can't share yet, our percentage of students demonstrating proficiency on region's exams. We did just take a further analysis at those student groups in order to see which direction our populations were heading. So we saw our population of students who are proficient on regions, who receive special ed supports maintained from year to year. We saw improvement when it comes to our students who received free reduced lunch. And we did not see improvement when it comes to our students who are not white. So we'll circle back to that data as soon as we're able to share some of those specific numbers. But we just were hoping that that graphic would serve as an example that we're taking a look at that data.
So it's interesting to me, it would seem our math scores are higher, our proficiency are higher than reading. It would seem like reading is something you do more. Not necessarily.
No, I mean, it's just.
Do more rather than the sense that they use their reading skills in certain areas is kind of how I'm thinking of it.
It's just so complex and every time I see these scores, I always say, we look at our overall graduation rate, our overall performance in regions, which is outstanding, it's just not a personal thing. There's such a disconnect between state, seven, the three, three way, and the state of regions. They don't talk to each other. Somehow, even though our kids, the kids across the state, not just here, don't perform wonderfully in state assessments, three, three way. Their regions, like the Robert Furrow, the exit of, you know, public transportation, they did really well. So I'm not sure how much of an indicator goes.
And for those of you who were on the board recently, you may recall in January, we did a data retreat. We looked at cohorts of students, exactly what Tony was just describing. You can see in that data that those state assessment scores stay down here and those regions assessment scores were ending up there. So again, that's a good sign, but I think it's important that we're keeping tabs on measures like this to ensure that that continues to happen. But I agree, like when you're using your reading skills to solve math problems or understand a math problem. We're seeing better performance in math. Any other questions before we move on?
I would just say too, historically going back years, in this district, it's always been math has been better than ELA. Reading and literacy in general, I think that's universal, I think, across the state.
So then I will proceed into our last goal of discussion tonight. Goal number two in our board and district goals is to increase school safety and security measures by supporting mental health opportunities and a learning environment that's safe and secure for students and staff. So again, our document identifies some specific long-term goals. Continuing to provide school resource officer support in all buildings to build relationships and assist students. Ensuring that we're communicating available mental health services and updated resources for both students and staff. Incorporating ongoing safety trainings is also part of those long-term goals. Offering wellness opportunities for students and staff, just as some examples. So for context, by doing those things over time, we are using the measures of the percent of students participating in extracurricular or athletic opportunities, monitoring disciplinary referral trends. For example, tonight we'll be looking at our out-of-school suspension data as well as the percentages of students who have been identified either at risk or at high risk when it comes to our universal behavior rating scale. Steps that we've taken to address this topic in the past have been promotion of positivity project, which over the course of time has grown and grown and grown and become something that's more added tier one throughout our schools. Providing after-school transportation at the elementary level allowed us to afford the opportunity to more students to participate in those activities. You may recall by mentioning in the past of conducting an activity on it in order to track elementary participation, which might not seem like a lofty goal, but it truly can be when you're trying to make sure that your data is reflective of the ongoing activities that we offer. Our administrative trainings this summer, our team has spent a lot of time together just reviewing and refreshing our different policies and procedures. And with the continued expansion of that SRO SRPO program, if you recall last school year, we increased that support. So when it comes to building those relationships and assisting students, that's just an example of where we've been. You can see those steps that we're continuing to take. Most recently, we have started to introduce our new communication platform, Parents Square, that we're hoping increases that engagement by allowing that two-way communication. You may recall in this year's budget, investing in musical instruments for students in grades three through five. Continuing our second step SCL curriculum and also beginning to introduce more mental health first aid training, particularly this school year to our students in grades ten through twelve. This summer, we trained nine different staff members, Carrie and I are two of them, in order to deliver that curriculum to our students at Baker High School. So that's something we're certainly excited and passionate about. In October, we plan to launch a thought exchange to gather feedback related to specific locations when it comes to perceptions about safety and security, are there targeted areas that our community is feeling are more safe or unsafe than others? Continuing to address physical safety, you may recall using smart schools, bond funding to help us do so. And developing that timeline for ongoing safety training and recording. So when it comes to those data components that will help us monitor those different activities, all in all, forty-six percent of students participate in school offered activities. So I took a little sigh there because it's been an ongoing process of what I would call data cleanup. But that's where we ended up for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I did include the summer of twenty-two data here because in a future report down the road, we'll do some analysis on this past summer's participation. But all in all, you can see different from the data sets that we've been looking at comparing one year to the next. This data set specifically is a little different just because we have been monitoring the data in a different way to be more inclusive of those elementary offerings. So from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, we didn't see much change when it comes to the students participating in school offered activities, who receive special ed supports. But we again still see that disproportionate representation when we think about our whole population of students. Similarly, students who are participating in our activities, who receive free reduced lunch, we saw that increase then from the beginning of the year till the end of the year. And again, we see that improvement when we're looking at our percentage of students who participate who are not white. So again, those goals, we want to see that increased participation. We made some improvement when it comes to some of our groups. An interesting piece of the data, I think, is the percentage of students who participate in the summer compared to the percentage of students who participate throughout the year. Just wanted to point out that difference.
Is that forty-six percent, was that an increase or an decrease from previous years?
So what's hard is that we didn't track the elementary participation like we currently are. But yeah, in the past, at the secondary level, we've typically seen around forty percent. So now it's more inclusive.
I would make the assumption that there is an increase only because of the fact that prior to last school year, we did not offer all of those elementary after-school activities and clubs for students. We only had four and now we have, you know, we're up to eight this year. Certainly there's other intramurals that are being offered and this is the first year that we offer the transportation, three days a week deal. And I will say that we are looking as we move forward, how can we incorporate the transportation piece for the summer? We've been having that conversation and we're hopeful that we can add that into a grant that we're applying for.
I just have a quick question. So school activities, I mean, hopefully contributing social activities as well as whatever, heck, that would be, doesn't mean anything. These sort of activities tend to be more difficult to access for second language learners. I'm wondering if they're included in any of these data handles.
If they're part of, first of all, they would be included in the percentage of students participating overall. We did not include a breakdown for that specific population of students. It is a fairly small population in terms of what we usually see reported, reports from the state education department, for example. But yes, increasing opportunity for all students is certainly, you know, the goal of those different activities.
Part of the reason why, you know, you're not seeing that specific is we get to, I mean, it's going to identify those individuals because of the population being so small. If we were to highlight, you know, a student that participated in, I'm just making this up, let's just say football, and we know that they're an ELL student or ENL student, that we're calling them out. So we have to be careful about that, but certainly in a confidential memo, we can get you more specific data if that's what is of interest.
Yeah, I was actually just thinking in terms of going forward with a lot of changes in innovation policy and flows and all that stuff. Just kind of thinking ahead to what this might look like down the road.
Thank you. Wrapping up some of these data components, when it comes to our out-of-school suspensions, the first thing that I want to point out, it is that only five percent of students end up being suspended out of school for one day or more. So it is a very small population that we are talking about when we look at some of these other percentages. But you will see that there is that disproportionality when it comes to the students who are being suspended. So thirty-two percent of the students who are suspended out of school for one or more days received special education supports, that's in our twenty-two, twenty-three data. Sixty-four percent of the students who are suspended out of school received free reduced lunch. Twenty-six percent of students suspended out of school are not white. So when I'm talking about out-of-school suspension data in my head, I'm always thinking about that access to school. And for whatever the offense or whatever the reason they're being suspended, the result is we're saying, you cannot come to school now. And then I think about the lack of proportionality in this data and I think about chronic absenteeism. So again, students who are not coming to school. For whatever the reason, whether it's they're chronically absent or there's a disciplinary decision, they're not allowed to come to school. I think it's important that we're always mindful of both of those indicators and how that impacts all students, let alone students of particular populations.
So two things here, the special education kind of jumps out. Is that partly because of capabilities they may possess and be acting out sometimes? And if what, is there, what's, would be some explanations?
It certainly could be. Certainly, probably a significant portion of our students have disabilities that impact their behavior. So not just their capabilities, but their ability to function under stress. And so, you know, when you think about your ability to use coping strategies, they are a population of students that would struggle to problem solve, have executive functioning difficulties, planning, organizing, so they do. We often will talk about supports and interventions to put in place and if a student is suspended out of school, they have a manifestation. So I think what doesn't also show here is that often there's an out-of-school suspension, but then those students are allowed to come back sooner. But we do, we do have some processes in place and some things that we've done just this past summer, we'll be focusing on this and what we can do to support that population of students with restorative practices.
Second thing, so if they're suspended, they still get that after-school program, correct?
Two to five, sure. Three to five. But again, even though they're getting instructional assistance or it can't, it doesn't compare to the full day program. So I think keeping that in mind, if you're not here, you know, three hours a day is nice, but seven point two five for everyone else.
Well, and I think too, back to what Tanya was referencing earlier, you talked about the chronic absenteeism and the fact that a protective factor is relationships and sometimes. and the fact that a protective factor is relationships and sometimes them out-of-school suspensions sort of sends the opposite message to not just special education students or students that have risk factors, but other students that you can't be here. Any work you've done building those relationships or building that sense of belonging is sabotaged.
Two questions, the three to five or two to five now, is that only offered to long-term suspensions? Or is that for like if they were suspended one to five days?
Technically for any student, typically you see it more for students that are out five days in the yard. But it's in the notification, it's available. So any student who is suspended can go after school and even if it's just a drop-in.
And the other question in regards to attendance, if they're suspended, that's not counted as a missed day of school because they weren't supposed to be there, right?
Not in terms of chronic absenteeism. Great question.
The last indicator I want to mention we have, we're using to monitor that, we use the BIMAS two as our universal screening assessment when it comes to supporting students' behavioral needs. So based on that assessment, twenty-four percent of students demonstrating at-risk or high-risk behaviors. When we dive into some of that data and we're looking at our student populations, out of those twenty-four percent of students demonstrating at-risk behaviors, twenty-seven percent receiving special education supports, forty-eight percent receiving free or reduced lunch, seventeen percent are students who are not late. So again, you always want to see that decrease in the percentage of students demonstrating at-risk behaviors, but we also want to see the proportionality compared to the overall percentage of students, overall population of students. So I would say, all in all, the trends that we're seeing in these different measures are consistent from measure to measure to measure. So what do we do about that? When it comes to the key pieces of our school culture, I think it's important that we keep in mind that there's obviously multiple facets of that. I just wanted to bring back and just a brief discussion about this graphic because whether it's trauma-sensitive schooling or practices, I don't care much about that a little bit. When we first started our discussion, that culturally responsive teaching, our restorative practices that we were just mentioning, or different components of social and emotional learning, we know that those are all components that support students when it comes to looking at the whole child and there are various skills that they have. So these different areas will support their academic performance and their overall well-being. So I think it's important that we keep those practices in mind. We're always focused on our culture and focused on our climate. And then Don, this is the slide that you've been waiting for. So in the interest of time, just to give a brief overview, the full data set is linked here in order to access the interactive report itself. And now that we have presented this to the board, we will get it added to our district's website on our interactive report card page, just like last year's data is. So I mentioned briefly that this data just provides a different visual of the different percentages that you saw and heard us talk about tonight. So just to point out how to read this, this chart is specific to students' universal screening scores, the BIMAS two. So the data we were just freshly looking at. This table up top, you can see based on the key, purple indicates the student has an IEP. The green indicates that they do not. When we're talking about proportionality, we can see that fifteen percent of students who have IEDs. And really, if we were proportionate across each of the different risk levels, that line, if we were to follow it down, maybe we would see about fifteen percent of students in each of those different risk levels. So we see that really when we're talking about finding strength in our SCL skills, we're also seeing that disproportion in representation because that, you know, that purple, it looks like it's about six or seven percent of our students who receive special ed supports. Again, lacking that proportionality to the overall population. So that's just a brief explanation of how you can read that chart. Over on the left-hand side, you see some different filters for each of the different areas that we went through tonight. You can sort by different demographic areas, just like we saw this evening. You can change the filter for a specific building or group of buildings. In this instance, our reader type, we know that we administer this assessment by teachers' community rating scale in grades K through six, the seven through twelve data is particularly interesting because it's how our students are self-recording. Or you can drill down and just look at one specific area as well. So all of that data in the interactive report is linked just by clicking there. But as I mentioned as well, now that we've held tonight's meeting, we will get that listed right here, just like you can see for years past. So with that, now can you answer any other questions? I thank everybody for the dialogue and conversation that we were able to have about some of this data tonight. I know it's an area that's certainly gaining popularity, I would say, across the region in terms of looking at our data in this way, just based on my collaboration with other districts and different professional development opportunities and conferences that we've taken part in.
I just wanted to ask for the universal screening SCL, what's considered at-risk behaviors? I don't know if you've been interested in that, but...
So based on the BIMAS rating scales, the actual assessment is comprised of thirty-four different questions. And whether it's the teacher's rating or the student's rating, they might rate something as seemingly simple as, I have friends and I can make friends easily, and they answer on a lifers scale. Yep, always, or no, never, to something very serious when it comes to identifying that they have thoughts of self-harm. So again, using that same rating scale, it really depends on the, you know, that's being assessed. But I think what's powerful in that data is that it's marked nationally and so, just like our other universal screening tools, it's powerful data because it gives us that comparison.
And will we be able to kind of see the difference, like you said, with their own personal rating versus the rating that they're given?
The teacher rating in grades K through six, you can see some differences based on how teachers observe behaviors of students, again, at different grade levels, compared to how students are rating their whole behavior.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Danielle this time? Danielle, thank you, very, very interesting information and...
I'm sorry, I would just...
Maya, please.
Of course, the point now is...
Oh, yeah, it's, I was just like the, I said, I mentioned it before, I had a BSA money, they talked about the BIMAS. And then I told a lot of this committee along with this mafia. But it is, when it comes to the data that you receive from the students themselves, it's just also something to keep in mind that it may not, when you carry the at-risk, the students are at risk, it's important to keep in mind that, the data may not always be accurate because they have, they don't feel comfortable or they have distrust in the system. So they will not put the right answers and it's not that their views aren't valid. It comes from a place of just being afraid or being concerned of what would happen or reactions if they felt like that from family or teachers or just how they may be perceived. So it's just important to keep in mind when we see those results as students take in the BIMAS. I was there when it first came around and I also stated this before, that a lot of students, at first it was a bit new news. A lot of students, it was kind of like shocking to them and it kind of built that distrust with the BIMAS right away. Even now, it's been improved and students know that counselors and teachers see it. It's just, I just wanted to mention that when we see those results, you have to keep in mind as students that they don't feel comfortable or they don't feel safe mentioning that they're being a little bit more, anything like that.
I'm just going to add, I agree with Maya a hundred percent. I think that's why we're also trying to put other systems and procedures in place, the mental health first aid, so that when peers recognize and staff recognize teacher training, support staff training, a student in crisis, they have the ability to react and respond because of the examples that you've given this evening.
And I would add too, I think acknowledging that point and the difficulty in truth in it is important. I think that's why I'd be probably even more concerned because even the data that is collected based on what students are recording, specifically when it comes to what is considered an active attack or symptoms related to anxiety, depression or withdrawal, we're seeing about thirty percent of students who are reading the that scenario of concern. So to know that it's probably higher than that thirty percent is something that's even more concerning and creates even more reason for, like Dr. Barbara mentioned, that and that all first aid training and some of that work are committed. And I know Carrie has something to say about it, but I think...
No, I think too, just in addition to that, what the data shows, the limited data we have there, we may not be able to aggregate or include all students, shows that our students in certain subgroups are at greater risk and it's growing. You know, despite our best intentions and interventions we're doing, it's either staying the same or it's getting, you know, it's increasing a little bit every year, so.
The challenge of course, how we could set it just going in, it's not here to harm, but let them in order to harm with this period of real serious honest attempt to try to help solve the problem, you know?
That was part of the reason that I brought it up because I could remember Maya saying that one time. So it would be interesting to look at correlation between the two, knowing that there might be some skewed data when it comes to system response.
Yeah, there's definitely, I think interesting, to give a point to say, I give that thirty percent, which is an example from the spring on the student rating, teachers at the K six level rated about twelve percent. So yeah, some interesting data trends when it comes to those comparisons of teachers versus students rating. I will just add to the point about mental health first aid. We've talked about the team side and training our students in how to recognize and how to increase those healthy behaviors. But another important one is called the youth mental health first aid that is meant to train adults in how to respond to youth mental health crises. So it's multifaceted for staff and for students.
Okay, so we're about to the end of our time, is there any other questions this time? Danielle, thank you very much. We look forward to additional data and we will now return our work session and we will enter into a retreat, we're going to enter into a retreat on DEI. Thank you everyone.